As soon as I find my agenda, we'll get started.
Do we do Pledge of Allegiance?
I believe it's a new...
So, Pledge of Allegiance is a new item on the agenda?
Tradition.
It's a new tradition, so everyone please stand. So, to start the year, we have nominations to appoint the 2016 Chair and Vice Chair, and Susan's the head of our nominating committee.
I'd like to nominate Skip Kunda as our Vice Chair and Steve Cooper as our Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Yes. Next is the December 7th minutes.
Yes.
From the December 7th meeting, yes?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify one issue with regard to the minutes. And it's, Sue, you do a great job, and I apologize that I didn't catch this earlier. And I don't know that it actually matters for the minutes, other than I'd like to say this publicly. Oh, Sue's not here. Okay, well, she does a great job. The applicant for Villanova did offer to provide the additional parking that we had requested with regard to the slight increase in the amount of seating. That's not reflected in these minutes. The only reason I'm raising it now is to just ask staff to double-check that that was incorporated into the, whether or not that was incorporated into the plan that was approved by the Board of Commissioners.
We will do that, Mrs. Stern.
Other than, I move we approve the minutes.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is 131, 133 Garrett Avenue. Is the applicant here? Please come up. Just please take a minute to introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Estock. I am the Civil Engineer and Land Surveyor for the project, and this is the applicant, David Brosso. Hi.
Floor's yours.
Thank you. We were before this Planning Commission once before. I did not attend that meeting, but we came in with an application that was slightly different than what you see here. Is that the best can be focused, or?
Yeah, can we maybe blow it up a little more to get into the center of the site itself, not so much the legend? Thank you. If you just slide the plan over maybe a little bit to center it?
Want me to slide it?
Yeah, you slide. No, the other way. A little more, so we can see the street and all. Okay, that's perfect. Yep.
What we have here is a 63-foot wide by 173-foot-deep lot in the Garrett, on Garrett Avenue, in the Garrett Hill section of Radnor Township. The lot's vacant. At the top of the plan, there's an existing building with three units, and that gray area to the back is a parking lot for that unit to the top of the plan. And they access the site through an eight-foot-wide existing alley that's down our top property line there to the rear parking area. What we came in with the last time was a set of twins.
Actually, maybe just focus on this plan?
Okay.
I mean, unless that's relevant to this plan?
The only difference was, before we came in with garages.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Because what we did in the last time is we showed a twin unit with garages up front and then four parking spaces to the rear, two for each unit. And the Garrett Hill Coalition expressed some serious concerns about, number one, having those two driveways out to Garrett Avenue, and secondly, the look of those garage doors up front. So, they were opposed to that. So, we appreciate their concern, and David met with them, and we regrouped and we revised to this plan. So, what this plan shows is still a twin unit. Those darker brown areas in the back are decks with porches in the front and just pedestrian sidewalks that connect to the Garrett Avenue sidewalk system. And then we took the garages out of the plan and added those two parking stalls to the back. So, now we have three off-street parking stalls to the rear for each unit for a total of six. So, it's a very similar plan, except the elimination of those garages up front. And I believe, and as I said, I haven't had communication with, maybe David had, but I think that the Coalition was happy with this new proposal.
Excuse me, Mr. Estock. Hi.
How you doing?
Good. We're neighbors.
Yes, we're neighbors.
I noticed that your plan in color is different from the plan that we got last week. Is there any other things you would highlight that are different? I mean, the porches are in a different location, and the decks are a lot larger.
Yes.
Which one would we be approving? The picture on the table, or the plan is submitted?
Okay. What happened was, we submitted, and I'm sorry, David, you handle some of this for us, but we originally submitted the application that you see here, which is, I believe, Mr. Kunda is the one that you have in front of you?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then in discussion with Mr. Brosso and the Township, with Kevin at the Township, we came in with a revised plan to make these units just about 10 feet deeper. So, what we're going to do is, instead of this 52-foot-deep unit, we let approval for a 62-foot-deep unit. So, it is 10 feet deeper.
I'm sorry, I need to ask staff, don't we need a whole new set of plans submitted with zoning calculations and impervious and all sorts of things, then? We've had other, it's no offense to you, but we've had other situations where we get a plan, we've studied it, we've read the review letter, and then the applicant comes with something different, and, you know, like, what are we approving? What has the review been? Has there been a determination if the zoning calculations are accurate? The plan as submitted was extraordinarily close to impervious, and you're saying this is bigger. So, I just want to check with staff about that.
I'm sorry, I apologize for missing the beginning of that. I was meeting with another applicant. Is this a, Joe, is this a different plan than what was submitted as part of the land development application?
Yeah, there has been revisions since then, yes.
This is the first I'm hearing of this, and I have not seen any of the revisions.
I don't want to overstep, but I, I mean, the zoning for one of these lots was at 59.77% as on the plans we have. They're adding more impervious. We don't have a zoning table. I'm not even sure that we could, in good conscience, I'm not sure that it makes sense to waste your time or ours tonight without our engineer having seen it, reviewed it, given comments, verified the calculations. I'm not sure what the right thing to do is, and fairness to Roger, he's just hearing this for the first time.
Just from my two cents, I don't think you can even...
You can't.
You can't. First, it would never get in front of zoning unless you have what you have. And what you're presenting to us there and what you ask us to vote on are two separate animals. I don't think I could vote on anything without having them review it.
It's also a preliminary final. So, especially considering, if it were a preliminary, yeah, but...
I still, we still can't, but that's another problem.
But I have another comment, since it sounds like you might come back. Have you considered putting two driveways in? Because... I heard somebody say you can't. But it seems, especially since you made the houses a little longer, if you shaved back a little bit, just a foot on each house, you would have enough to put in a 10-foot driveway on each side, and then you would have additional parking, because I see major problems with the stacking of the parking behind, and then if people have guests and they go into the driveway, the people in 133, for example, if 131 has guests, might not be able to get out because the extra people will be blocking the driveway.
We did consider that, but we're really conscious on minimizing the amount of impervious coverage.
Then why did you extend the house 10 feet?
Well, because the 10 feet was not enough room for an additional driveway. So, if we took that 10 feet of building coverage and converted it to impervious coverage, we couldn't get the second driveway.
Yeah, but you just said that you were concerned about the amount of impervious.
Yes.
And that's why you didn't want to do it. Oh, I'm talking, okay, I understand.
Yeah, so we were at the very limit of the impervious coverage. So, even though we had the additional 10 feet of house, it wouldn't have been enough for a second driveway.
However, you could cut back a bit on your parking areas in the back, because the cars could stack. You could have, if it's allowed by code, I don't know if it is. But you wouldn't have that whole area where the word "blacktop" is, because you could put your parking area a little closer, and then you'd have more of a rear yard.
Yeah, I understand that. I always feel that it's nice to have in every parking stall independently accessible, because what I...
Which is why I suggested the second driveway.
Yeah, because why, I guess, is you put a driveway, and you park them in the driveway, and they're valeted, or they have to jockey the cars, then the tendency is for those residents to say, hey, instead of moving my car back and forth, I'm going to park on the street, which is something we really wanted to discourage in this plan. We wanted to make sure they park off-street in these independently accessible stalls, so nobody has to...
Mr. Chairman, just one minute. This zoning district actually suggests that they use shared driveways all along this, and I believe the intent is to preserve more parking on the street. But that's a requirement, that they consider that, and they use that whenever possible.
I was only suggesting, because I thought actually it would give more parking and more impervious, or possibly the same impervious.
Kathy, if you look, part of that driveway is crushed stone, it's not even blacktop.
Okay.
So, I mean, he's...
And part of that driveway is on the neighbor's property also.
It's existing crushed stone, but the future is going to be all blacktop. So, it's just like, where it says crushed stone, in that slanted text, that's an existing condition, but all, the entire driveway in the future condition will be blacktop. It won't be crushed stone.
Will it all be on your property, or is it still going to be shared?
Well, we're still going to share the alley that's existing paved, but all the additional paving will be on our property.
Okay.
Probably you guys are going to have to resubmit, but there's three questions that I'd like for staff to, I think are going to apply regardless. I'd like to ask them so that they can give you clarification, and which will, I think, will inform your work. One of them is whether or not they'll be constructing a driveway through steep slopes. There are some steep slopes on the edge of the property, and it appears that the driveway, the shared drive is going through steep slopes. I'm not going to opine on that, I'm just saying this is what I saw in the plan. That's one thing. You just answered about the calculation, is whether or not the crushed stone is calculated into the existing impervious on the table. It's difficult to say, because this is, the page one says the record plan, not the existing conditions, and that references steeps, I mean, the crushed stone. And I don't know if the crushed stone was calculated into your impervious coverage. The third thing is, when I read the Garrett Avenue Neighborhood District, just simply based on the number of bedrooms that you're providing, you have to have three parking spots per unit. You've provided that. The question that I have for staff is that under 255, under our SALDO ordinance, 255-29A20, because you have semi-attached dwellings and a private driveway, in addition, you have to provide one parking space per four dwellings of unit for overflow parking. So, my question to staff that they need to determine is that Garrett Hill says you have to have three spots per unit, because it's Garrett Hill, and that's zoning. SALDO says you have to provide one overflow parking spot.
That's per four units. There's only two units.
Right, there's two units here, so they have to provide one. That's, I mean, we've always rounded up.
That's not the way that we look at it. It's a minimum of four.
Oh, when there's a minimum of four units. Okay, fine, so then six, great. And then whether or not it's an issue that the back door, the steps were going right into a parking spot. I think even Amy Kaminsky commented on that in her review letter of the plan we saw. And then the final thing is whether or not, I saw in two different spots of our review letters, and I just wanted to clarify this, whether or not the sidewalks have to be 36 inches or 48, and it's maybe 36 plus the 12 inches of the brick paving.
Herringbone, yeah, there's 36 concrete, a foot of herringbone, yes.
And that's where we get to the 48.
Yes.
So, you may be offset there. Really, the question then, I guess, is going to be about the steep slope in the driveway, and whether or not that crushed stone was part of your calculation for impervious. But on a new plan, it may be a different piece of information, anyway. Thank you.
Okay. Since we'll have to come back again, to minimize the iterations, it'd be helpful for us if we get the ultimate decision on how we believe we're calculating impervious versus some of the flexibility that Joe's encountered in other townships. We spoke with Kevin about this situation. It is one existing lot now. We're obviously seeking to subdivide it. What we're, what our going-in position is that the impervious calculation should be computed as the total amount of impervious, amount of impervious coverage for the entire lot versus the entire lot.
Well, no, actually, I would have to respectfully disagree. Roger, Kevin, and I, we've had a discussion. We've directed the applicant to do it this way, which is set forth in Roger's letter, and it's the way the township actually does interpret this and this situation. Unfortunately, the zoning ordinance, unlike other ordinances in other townships, where they distinguish between site impervious surface and a per lot, this one, we have one. And so, we've told them to, that so long as they meet the impervious requirements for the lot entirely, and set forth what each lot can get in a recordable document, that they're allowed to do that.
Is this, many years ago, we had an application, I would have to really think about it, but I know I still have the papers. There was, like, this blended impervious calculation. Is that what you're doing?
No, that's the old Florist, we had that, where we had two zoning districts there.
Right.
And we had to figure out how to, and they had different impervious requirements. We had to figure out how to handle it with that. This is different. When you read the ordinance, it doesn't say, do you base it on the site, the original lot, or do you base it on the individual lots after you're done?
Is this the wording in the Garrett Hill District, Peter, or is it an overall...
No, it's a general definition.
In zoning?
Yes.
Huh. Thank you.
If you refer to my comment too, under zoning, it outlines the, what would be the permissible impervious on each lot, and that would be, that's the maximum permissible impervious under the scenario that Peter just described. And that would be then deed restricted on that lot.
Ask about that deed restricted. Okay, then that's what this is about? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, in that way, the purchasers of the lot would be put on notice that this is the amount of impervious surface you have, this is the amount you'd be able to use if you buy the house. You know, how much is left over? If you want to put in a shed, you want to put in additional walkway or something, so you know. But it's just, it's a way to divide it up, and it's a way, Kevin has faced this under other properties, and it's the way he's done it with other properties, and we think it's the most fair for both the developers and for the future residents of these properties.
That's clear, then?
Yeah, just one more point of clarification, just because...
Do you want to closer the mic?
Yeah. If we could just get one, I believe I hear, I believe I'm hearing it correctly, but since we have the numbers here, if we just ask one more. Are you able to zoom in on this slightly? No? Okay. In, I don't know if you can make out the numbers. Well, now you can. We'll just go this way. Where is the, where is it? Okay, right here. So, Joe has it here as just shy of 10,000 square feet for what he's considering the net of the lot versus the gross, and that's whether you go, Joe can say it better, but to the center of the street or just to the right-of-way. We're not sure which one is appropriate. We think it's the 10,000 square feet. That's what we're going to base things on, but we don't want to misinterpret it.
I will address that directly with Joe. We've had previous conversations on that with some people from my office and Joe, and I'll make sure that we're clear on that.
You know, I have a comment for you, and again, this is something that should be looked at at the beginning. In page two of Roger's letter, it talks about Lot 1 getting 3,465 square feet of impervious, and Lot 2, 2534, and saying that the two lots combined are 6,000 square feet. And I'm looking at your chart, and it looks like you have, like, close to 5,000 on each lot of impervious. Yeah, but if they couldn't have 6,000...
No, no, it's not 5,000 for Lot...
Okay.
Yeah, like, the plan submitted before you, Skip, Lot number one was... Lot number one, we had 3,465 square feet, and Lot number two, we had 1,768 square feet. So, that's four, five, 5,500 square feet. Now, with this added 10 feet... After we add 10 feet, we're up to 5959. So, we're up to about 6,000 square feet total for the lot.
Okay.
That's excluding everything within the right-of-way. So, we're about, a little less than 6,000 square feet total.
I guess I was just confused, there were some numbers in each lot. If you slide that over back to the structures?
Which numbers? The numbers that are in, the numbers that are in the comment in my letter are the maximum that they would be permitted on those sites. It's not what, it's not what was on the plan that was submitted. That's the maximum that would be deed restricted for each lot.
Okay.
There is?
I was just, it looked like there were two 5525s.
There is, I mean, I just want to point, this one thing that Roger Phillips did pick up is, if you look at the chart, number two, it says rear paving, it says 2,271 square feet. You see Lot number one says rear paving, 2,271 square feet. That is a mistake. The rear paving I have in Lot number two is an error, but the total is correct. So, of course, the total is 1,768 for Lot 2. It can't be, you know, that can't be 2,271. That was, you know, it was just, the drafts we cut and pasted the rear yard paving in there, and, but that's, that one entry is in error, but the totals are correct. Regardless, you know, there's going back and forth in these plans, I apologize, it is confusing, but when we come back, you know, we'll have one plan at the review.
Also, can you, when you come back, address kind of all the other issues of staff?
Absolutely.
To the best of your capabilities, and it would, since you have another month, if you could just, if all those issues could go away, as many as possible, and the ones that remain are the ones we'll have to deal with.
Sure, absolutely, yes.
Yep. Is there anything else that is, forget all the little calculations, from a gross standpoint, that, you know, we got the driveways and, okay? Then we'll look forward to seeing you maybe next month.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good evening. Peter, we have to vote on the... We were just tabling it, right?
Yeah, just tabling it, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, next applicant is 427 East Lancaster Avenue.
Good evening, Greg Adelman here on behalf of the applicant. I believe this is the first time we're in front of you on this application. Just wanted to let the Planning Commission know, we're not seeking a recommendation this evening. We would just like to go through some of the planning comments. We have some issues still, we know, to work out with our neighbors. We have some issues with some internal circulation that we have to go over on the site, and some other miscellaneous issues, including traffic, meeting with Amy. So, we just really wanted to go through, present the plan to you, address as many comments as we can, get any feedback that you may have, and then come back in the next month's meeting.
Great.
I don't know, James, if you need to say hi. Mr. Levin's here on behalf of the neighbors. I know he had expressed a... Just to say hi.
Hi. I'm James Levin. I am Councilman for and a principal, one of the principals of the adjacent neighbors, and I'm just here to make sure. We're not going through tonight. We had some things that we were discussing, and it looks like that applicant is going to try to address some of our concerns. So, I'm entering my appearance, I'm saying hello, and hopefully we can make it go through, and we'll probably see you next month.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks, James. At this point, maybe it's best if I have Chris Yon just give an overview of the existing conditions on the property, where it's located, and then what's being proposed, so the Planning Commission can get a better feel for what the applicant is proposing to develop on the property. Chris, if you want to jump up.
Good evening. My name is Chris Yon, I'm the Civil Engineer for the project. So, this is the existing conditions plan here. You can see the North Arrow is at the top. Lancaster Avenue is on the south side of the property. The train tracks are on the north side, and on either side are apartment buildings owned by Mr. Levin and his partners. What exists right now on the property is an apartment building in the front. You can see there's a loop driveway and a driveway extending up on the right-hand side, on the eastern side. As you get to the middle of the property, there's a garage, which are for the apartment buildings. And then in the back is Radnor Family Practice. That's currently the owner of the property, the record owner. Right now, there's two parcels, this back piece with the Radnor Family Practice and the apartment, although arguably, the parcels were somewhat merged since the garage extends over the property line here. So, that's what's there now. Essentially, all of the existing improvements will be removed. This is the proposed plan, and what we propose is a condominium building. You will drive in the main driveway on the eastern side. Right here, immediately to your left or to the west is the entrance into the garage-level parking, which runs all the way to the back. And basically, the building is in two parts. There's this rectangular portion in the front, which holds half of the units, and this rectangular portion in the back. We do have the, we meet the 2.25 parking spaces per unit, which are just slightly above that.
So, one question, so there are two buildings, but one parking structure?
Correct.
Okay.
So, if you're, and we have an elevation here to kind of help illustrate that, to show how you would see the two buildings, but the parking structure that connects. You won't see these cars, that was just for illustrative purposes. They will all be underground or within the garage.
Are all the indicated parking inside a structure, or any of them outdoor?
There are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight parking spaces outside. The rest are all inside. We do have the Township Engineer and Traffic Engineers' review letters. We did meet with Mr. Phillips last Thursday, as well as Mr. Kachansky and Mr. Daley. So, we understand some of their concerns, and we intend to revise the plans to hopefully address those, as well as the neighbors, and come back for you, in front of you next month. We're hoping to be here tonight, just so you can see the plan and see if you have any additional comments that maybe we could also address.
I mean, I think there's a lot of, you know, issues you got to resolve with neighbors, well, really with staff, and I don't think we want to spend a lot of time going over those, because we're hopeful you'll get those resolved, so we'd kind of be wasting our effort. And I mean, I don't know if there's anything aside from some of the obvious violations that we're going to want corrected, things like that, but...
And Steve, if I may jump in, just, most of these issues, we believe, are resolvable. We don't believe the zoning issues that were highlighted will be an issue. One in particular was dealing with the steep slopes. Given that this is an undersized lot, your ordinance allows an exemption from the steep-slope requirements, other than disturbance and preserving the ENS controls. It's not the same type of steep-slope analysis that we normally see. That was one of the zoning issues that was raised. Another zoning issue raised was a minimum lot size. Another zoning issue raised was a minimum lot size. It's a non-conforming lot, so under Pennsylvania law, you're allowed to develop it without requiring a zoning variance. So those are the two biggies that jumped out at me from the January 25th letter. The rest of them, I believe, are will-complys. We'll just have to demonstrate compliance. Some of them are dealing with building height, building dimensions, and whatnot. So we'll actually have to show those architectural renderings and make sure that they comply with the ordinance as those measurements are calculated. After that, we go into some of the subdivision and land development issues, some of which still need to be further developed. Stormwater, which still needs to be designed fully. And then traffic, we have to meet with Amy to talk about the traffic. So just to give a broad overview of what the issues are, we'll have to address them and then come back.
Sorry. How many apartments are in the apartment building now?
How many are in there now? Yeah, they're saying five.
And you're proposing 22, right?
Twenty-two, that's correct.
Amy, pardon me, I just want to ask a quick, did I read somewhere that you were suggesting that they flipped the location of the driveway? Did I read that?
No.
Okay. I didn't know if having the driveway on the west side of the property, maybe I misread that, something about a center-turn lane. But I'm assuming that the applicant would work with staff to kind of figure out the orientation, if the driveway orientation made more sense, either for the neighbors or for traffic flow on Lancaster.
If you're looking for a left-turn lane, then you would want to leave the driveway where it is.
Oh, keep it east.
So that your auxiliary lane would be across her frontage.
Okay.
And that was the issue, one of the issues we needed to meet with Amy about.
Okay.
So...
All right. Thank you, Peter.
Want to add some comments?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Please, go ahead, Kathy.
I'm really concerned about the number of units here. It seems like an awful lot in such a small parcel. My other big concern, I'm sure staff has brought it up, is the only one entrance and exit into it for fire safety and things like that. Parking areas for delivery trucks, because if you have this many apartments, you're going to have a lot of UPS trucks and FedEx trucks, other than trash people and so forth. So it just seems that there's way too many units, and if you were to take off a couple, then it would give yourself some breathing space so that you can get these other things in there.
And you have hit on two of the big issues, the fire safety and the deliveries. Two of the issues that were raised were, I know we had a meeting and talked about that with Roger and with Ray Daley. One of the things they're looking at is increasing curb radii and making sure that the turning radius is sufficient for emergency vehicles that are likely to service the site. The other thing was that originally, I think, we had showed a loading and unloading zone. I'm not sure if it's still on this plan, which isn't actually required. We're really looking at what is the more practical delivery type of situation, which is probably UPS or FedEx truck. So we're going to have to look at how to rework that circulation pattern. So the internal circulation is certainly something that we have to deal with over the next month or so, figure out how to better address it.
Yeah, the normal pattern that I've seen with all FedEx and UPS trucks is they park at the entrance they have to go into, even if they're blocking everything. And since you have two entrances there, it seems like you need sort of a pull-off area near both.
Yeah, Chris is going to jump in, too.
I guess I can be a little more specific about what we talked about on Thursday and how we propose to address some of the conditions. One of those is the second means of egress. We plan on adding another exit from the building in the back here with some stairs. For trash, right now, this is the only entrance to get in on both sides. We plan to adjust this elevator equipment area so that we can get a second door here so that the trash truck could pull in here. We'll add a walkway, basically as a utility entrance, to get right through for the trash. And the architect is here tonight as well, if you'd like to talk to him. He has a product, a spec sheet, that shows, I believe it's called a Trash Buddy?
Actually...
We don't, I don't think that...
Yeah, if there's many major issues, let's just say them, but we don't need you to, we don't need you to comment on how you might solve them, just so you know what we're concerned about.
All right. I'll move on from the trash. The other one was the maneuverability. We, Mr. Daley asked that this...
Actually, I don't need you to do that. Just come back with the plan.
I just wanted to mention my comments so that...
So, yeah, because we want you to work with staff to eliminate as many problems as possible. And then when you come back, we'll review the plan and whatever issues are remaining.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just, I wanted to go over what we were doing so that we might get some of your feedback now, instead of addressing staff's comments and then coming back next week.
I'm going to see, we're going to have to see a plan, a specific plan, to see where the specific entrances are, what the distances are. Staff's got to review that plan, so we can't really give you that kind of feedback until we see the plan that you presented.
Right. And all we're looking for tonight is broad-based issues, as Kathy is setting forth, and we'll be able to tackle them with staff, come back to you with their recommendations as well, and hopefully have a more refined plan, including landscaping and whatnot. So I don't know if anyone else has any other further comments, or if staff has any other further comments.
A small comment. Somewhere in the review letters, I saw the, someone said that they had a slight concern that all these cars are going to be parking here, and there's only one entrance and exit from the garage.
Right. And I think, were we exploring a second entrance to the garage, or is that not possible?
Not a second.
Yeah, just a pedestrian entrance and exit. That's what they were talking about. I don't know if that's going to resolve that issue, so we'll have to continue to work through that as well.
I just have a background and only a quick answer. Twenty-two units, one bedroom, two bedrooms, targeted for a certain age group, families, price point, like what's...
Scott can give you the background on that better than I can.
Very quick, because Steve wants it quick.
No pitch.
I'm Scott Breaman. I'm the developer. Two bedrooms, three bedrooms. These are going to be luxury condominiums. Eight hundred, nine hundred on the low end, up to a little over a million on the high end. There'll be one large unit per building that would be at another multiple above that, geared primarily for the downsizer, near, obviously, the train and shopping and restaurants and that kind of thing.
You know we have a lot of these already in the township, right?
I do.
A lot of them aren't sold? Okay, whatever. Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. We look forward to coming back next month.
Peter, is this public comment appropriate for this?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Okay. We'll see you next month. Next is the library expansion.
So Steve, you're tabling that plan also, correct?
We're tabling that plan as well. Thank you, Peter.
Mr. Chairman, before you tonight, you have the principals of Kimmel Bogret Architecture, Martin Kimmel, Sherry Kimmel. They were chosen to perform the professional design services for the Radnor Memorial Library renovation and expansion. Again, we know the plans got to you a little late. The review was done. So what we're looking for tonight, hopefully, we want the project to be done right. This building is owned by the township and used by the library, so we want a good project, a project that's done properly. If all goes well tonight, we would get your recommendation with conditions to then move on to the Board of Commissioners. We'll see how that goes, and I will turn it over to Martin Kimmel.
Hi all. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to trust that you're mostly familiar with the library and its location on West Wayne Avenue. The plan you have showing on the slide right now is the existing conditions plan. I just wanted to kind of highlight some things about the site before I show the proposed. The site connects through, it's a one-way parking, or one-way travel, lot from right to left on the image, from West Wayne Avenue through to the South Wayne lot. It is a tight site in the Wayne Business District, and then there's a special use overlay postal district over top of that, so it's a little complicated. Library was built many years ago, has been outsized for a long time. The hope of the township and the library board was to expand as much as they could without having to leave the center of Wayne, it being considered a great asset to that part of the township, allowing for lots of folks to arrive there on foot and whatnot, and close to at least one school. So at any rate, so we endeavored to do that, and sort of our mandate was, we know we're not going to get any more parking, but we can't lose any parking. Can you figure out how to do that while making it bigger? So I'm going to highlight the proposed. It's now on this sheet, and it's really not designed, this is a technical drawing, not really designed for presentation. So we have had an environmental issue at our office, so I haven't been able to get there to get you like the nice rendered drawing, so I apologize for that. At any rate, the intent... Yeah, this will probably work, right? I think so. Okay. So the intent is to infill and expand the building in the areas that we had available. So I'll highlight one area here in the front corner. That's the existing porch, and that area would be enclosed. And then the square space at the, at the front of that is actually a new entry addition. Then, in the middle here, a new porch would be recreated that's located in the center along West Wayne Avenue. So that would be partially under roof, partly not, a little bit similar to what they have now. And then at the top of the sheet, up in the corner here, is another expansion that's, you know, indoor, if you will, and that's the children's library expansion. That's one of the spaces that suffers most. So we have another helpful document I'll share with you momentarily. In addition to that, we have a small addition to create better handicap accessibility along the existing parking lot. And then what is hard to see on this drawing is we're actually expanding above the parking in the area bounded by these columns. So you would now, if you notice, you come in, you drive down the hill along the library, you would actually drive under the building in a sort of a parking garage-like way. So the building would be up, and you would have parking underneath it, and the floor expands. So Roger was kind enough to share this document, and that shows how that piece of the library expands over the parking.
I don't know if Jim can blow it up a little bit?
Oh, blow it up, sorry. Is that as good as we can get?
Can we get bigger, Jim?
All right. So to the extent that you can see it, you'll see the entrances, as I described it, located in this corner. There'll be a stair and an accessibility ramp up. The white area is the outdoor porch. Nothing else?
Oh, perfect.
There he goes. Where's Jim? Is he in mystery? Good job, Jim. All right, it's almost in focus. All right, so you see the terrace, hopefully, in the upper gray area, you see the children's library. And then inside the building, we'll get kind of an extreme makeover, if you will, and will be reconfigured to make it feel more open, to provide segregation between areas that are in conflict now, you know, teen area versus child area versus adult collections and so on. And to overall make it a more vibrant space with, to accommodate the kind of activity that it's already getting, but is not really designed to. It's kind of was designed in the old-school hush-hush library, and now libraries are kind of active information gathering spaces. So at any rate, to focus again on the east side of the building, the addition comes out over the parking lot toward the existing, what I think everybody would refer to as the, now I can't think of them, the post office warehouse. Not the post office proper, but there's that warehouse building behind the post office. So there, those walls face each other, and I can, on a different plan, if you like, I can show you that their walls are kind of close to the two property lines there. So at any rate, that's the crux of it. We do also then switch from head-in parking on the existing, if we can zoom back out, to angled parking, to make that lot work a little more easy with some of the bigger SUVs filled with vans and kids and whatnot. We still have parallel parking along the side of the building to maintain our parking count. And then we have kind of greatly improved entry areas. We add some accessible space. The book drop would be underneath the building, so it gives us some weather protection for the staff that have to run out and collect the books and so on.
Excuse me, you said you had added parallel parking as well, because you've decreased the number of spaces. Could you point that out?
And we maintained it. We probably added a couple spaces, but the parallel spaces along the building here and the head-in spaces, I'll show you. For clarity's sake, you can see there are parallel spaces here and head-in spaces, and then we were able to extend some additional parallel spaces by fixing the grading, when there's kind of a hump there.
So you kind of just, this is our actual review tonight, right?
Yes.
That's correct, Mrs. Stern.
So, all right, great. I'll wait then until you're done.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, I don't have a lot more to present, except, say, we received the review letters. We've spent some time before the meeting to go over the consultant and township team to make sure that we could address all of those reviews, none of which, in my opinion, were significant issues, hurdles to overcome. That said, I think I could probably take your questions.
Do you want to start with them?
Just give me a minute.
I have a couple. Should I go?
I guess what I'm trying to decide, because staff would like us to try and come with a recommendation tonight with conditions. So what I'd like to do is kind of narrow down some of the items that were going to be, they're going to be outstanding, that we need to really kind of focus on. So maybe can the applicant go through the letters from staff, the staff comments, and give us an idea as to the will-comply items and the items which are not will-comply, so we can focus our efforts on those items, in addition to whatever comments else arrives?
Okay. I'll do my best to do that, certainly. All right. So I'm looking at the Gannett Fleming letter, and there's bullet points on the cover of that that begin with requesting the following waivers. And so parking facility dimensions are currently non-conforming, and we're looking for the same waiver to extend, to extend sort of what is an existing condition. We will ultimately, I think, need to request a variance on the count at zoning, which we didn't originally think as a group that we would need to do that, but it looks like that would be the cleanest way to be fully compliant with the process, because we're keeping the parking count the same, but we're increasing the square footage, so technically that reduces the overall parking per square foot that you have.
I thought you actually lost three.
I don't believe we did.
The table says you have 32, and the new proposal is that you'll have 29.
I believe that the 32 was counting spaces here, which aren't actually spaces, because it's where the dumpster is, so we'll have to look at the table.
Great, okay, thanks.
Okay.
They're just rearranged.
All right. So then, the waivers with regards to the groundwater recharge, water quality requirements and so on, given the tightness of the site, the intent is to address that on township's other property, the South Wayne lot, where there's a plan to do a major stormwater facility and to include that there as one big effort, rather than a tiny, small, not super-effective effort. So we'll be requesting that, and that's really what the next, one, two, three, four are. We're looking at probably adding back some BMPs where we can fit them now that we have a better handle on the site, which we will present moving forward.
I want to ask the stormwater one quick question.
Yeah.
There was a presentation in front of the EAC about a year ago, and not, you were not there. It was, I think the head of the library was there. Is there some kind of existing stormwater thing, like a cistern or something?
No. As near as we can tell, all there is, is there's a large inlet on the site right here.
Right.
That currently, the water runs to, mostly to that, what doesn't run past it, and goes directly into the storm sewer system.
Maybe this got knocked out in the design process, but there was some sort of a, either an existing cistern or a thought of creating a cistern and then watering the plantings that are involved and everything else, and that's gone, right?
Mr. Cundat, I might be able to interject here and help out a little bit. I'm not aware of the situation that you noted, but the Stormwater Management Advisor Committee, through the Ithaca Creek Watershed Study, analyzed this area. And we know we all get flooding in front of the firehouse and the middle school. Gannett Fleming is working on a design to finish the piping that was never completed, School Lane, North Wayne, West Wayne. And there was a very, very high-level conceptual plan shown with stormwater management in the South Wayne lot, and some actually protruded up into the library. We had our stormwater engineer talk with this team, and it didn't look like, from a timing standpoint, they were going to be able to make that happen. Number one, because it has a process to go through with the stormwater committee... Number one, because it has a process to go through with the Stormwater Committee. And number two, it was, the storage in the library parking lot was not a huge effect one way or the other. So the hope is, and there's no guarantee here, because like I say, this has to all get vetted through Stormwater and ultimately the Board of Commissioners, is that there will be a, some type of stormwater management facility under the South Wayne parking lot. And that will accommodate the minor increase in impervious surface of the library.
But we don't know for sure if that's going to happen and if it does, any idea of timing?
No, so right now, it's not an approved project. We're still, that study is complete and the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee is in the process of vetting projects and moving forward. That is not something specific. Regina is actually on the Stormwater Management Advisory Committee, so she can help out there too. But that is the thought that something will be done there only because of the fact that it's township-owned ground and there's not that much area that we can work in to do that. So township streets, parking lots is where that's usually going to focus.
Yeah, I don't know that at this point, this plan will then comply. And I think I have an issue with the last comment there. Number four regarding peak rate control requirements. I don't think we can rely on any projects to be done in that adjacent municipal lot to meet those requirements. I don't think we are in any position at any point to waive that requirement. I don't think we've ever done that.
I have a couple of clarifying questions. One is that on page three of Roger's letter, number seven, it talks about the minimum two-way aisle width by code is 18 and the plan provides 12 feet. As far as I remember, this, the library has always been a one-way parking lot.
That's, I can add to that. It was not clear on the plan that that was going to remain a one-way.
Alright.
So now, we met with the, with Mr. Kimmel before the meeting and he clarified that, so that comment will go away.
Great, perfect, okay, thank you. The only comment I have about the project, I mean, I'm concerned and disappointed as Regina is about the stormwater, although I know the area and I know the challenge we have. It's my hope that, you know, we'll be able to find a way to tie this property into something substantial underneath the South Wayne Lot, tie it into the thing that they're planning on South Wayne Avenue. You know, I mean, this is, but this is where we've got the library. I do want to say that I'm not sure the actual entrance to the library, is it largely going to be where it is now? Okay.
Largely.
Okay, then my only comment.
Not precisely.
Is that since you have to redo the drawings because of, you know, the zoning tables aren't on here, none of the actual calculations, I think Roger addresses this in his letters, that as someone who managed a person in a wheelchair for a number of years, I have a very strong appreciation for the distance of a handicap parking spot from an actual entrance. And while I, and I can see you've made a nice crosswalk and all that, I think locating the handicap spot much closer to the entrance, the actual entrance of the building, actually, if somebody's not in a wheelchair and they actually have to walk, that's actually a really far distance. So, you know, I'd ask you to, and we have a lot of senior citizens who would use the library, so I would just ask us to be sensitive to that.
What's unclear in this plan?
Please speak into the microphone and state your name.
I'm Sherri Kimmel and what's unclear in the drawing of this plan is that there's a, we are adding an elevator. So the entrance that's, that we have the handicap spot is actually closest to the elevator entrance. So that the, it's a lower entry level and then the elevator goes right up to the upper level. And then the, the one request was that we add one up by the street. But we also have ramp accessibility onto the terrace point, if you look at this point.
The other thing is regarding the parking. I'm hopeful, I mean, and you guys will have to go to zoning if you have to go to zoning. I'm hopeful that, given that we have a municipal lot right next door, that, you know, we can kind of consider that our own parking for our own purposes. But you have to go to zoning for that. I would say that if it goes that way, Mr. Norsini, it would be probably really appropriate to have one of those kiosks that drive me crazy, but that this is our system, so this is our system. Very close to the library, not just the one out on South Wayne Avenue. So that if people are going to utilize this lot for the library, they can do so conveniently and not get a parking ticket.
I would gladly bring that up to the Parking Authority. And don't forget, we have, there's municipal parking on West Wayne Avenue. There's the actual lot itself. And currently, the employees of the, of the library park on the northern portion of the South Wayne Lot. That's reserved for them, if you will. And to Regina's comment, by all means, as part of your conditions, if, you know, I understand fully where you're coming from on the stormwater. They would all be, if it so pleases this board to do that tonight, they would be the conditions you request her.
Do you know how large the library is currently? I know you said you're adding a certain amount of square footage.
It's currently 24,000 square feet. And we're adding 8,600 square feet to make it 32,600 square feet.
Okay, so you'll be roughly four parking spots short? Because I think the way I read the ordinance is that you need a parking spot per 1,000 square feet.
Correct, so really five.
Oh, so actually, right now, it's not non-conforming?
Oh wait, no, 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 I think it's two per 1,000.
Is it two or one?
Yeah, well, according to Charlie's letter, item number nine on page two.
Oh, I thought I read that as.
It's two per, two spaces for every 1,000 square feet. I like your interpretation better. If you, yeah, if you see that in the ordinance, that'd be great. Okay, so. More questions or shall I go back and hit them in order?
Let's go back in order.
Alright. So we talked about the waivers already. So the side yard setback, so it's, it's in the Wayne Business District overlay district. And then there's a special use area within the overlay district. In the Wayne Business District, it's a zero setback. In the special use area, unfortunately, it's a 15-foot setback. So we would, based on that being the controlling factor, we believe we'd need a variance on our east side for the addition that goes over top of the parking. And so we'll be requesting that. We are non-conforming on the west side and we are not impacting the non-conformity on the west side. So that would be a continuation of a non-conforming condition, which is what is noted. Comment number one. The buffer strip is a non-conformity as well, we intend that to continue and I don't believe we're impacting that. Design Review Board is just a statement. Number four gets us into the issue. Four and six really address what I just mentioned about the overlay districts and special use areas. So we have to address that at zoning. Let's see. Number five is a note to the drawings to confirm that we're fine with that. The maximum impervious coverage is 90%. The tables will reflected to show that we will, when this is done, we'll be at 83.5%. So we'll be compliant there. The height of the building is not an issue. We'll add that to the table as requested. We just talked about the parking on item number nine as a variance item. Yeah. Number 10, we have a porch wall that will be compliant and we'll have that additional information on there. The subdivision land development plan, note to the drawing number one, we will be requesting that waiver to submit as preliminary final. We will be adding the notes on number two as requested. And we'll have, yeah, the acreage correctly shown. But our calculation of impervious coverage is based on the actual acreage, so there's no concern there. The name and address is shown currently on the cover, we will add that to the site plan as well. The survey information that we had that actually Roger's firm prepared has the information requested. It muddied the plan up quite a bit, but we'll put that on a plan so that it's clear. Number five. We'll have all that, all that covered as well. I think it's covered in some and not in others, but, and we have to reconcile it with what the zoning ultimately allows us to have as a setback as well. So we'll do that. Number six. The, that's really, I think that's the issue of it being one-way and we confirmed prior to the meeting that we're going to continue to be one-way. The number eight is also an issue of one-way. A 12-foot wide entryway is the minimum for one-way and we're going to have a 15-foot wide entryway on, from West Wayne Avenue into the lot. So we'll be compliant there. Again, 25 being required for a two-way. Five-foot radiuses, we already comply with, so we will show as much. And then I believe.
Excuse me, I think you skipped over seven.
Did I?
I think.
I did not intend to. Oh no, I did mention the, that's where I brought up the, or maybe I did skip over it. I think we're going to ultimately be compliant. Yeah, because again, it's, he says an 18-foot wide aisleway, but we're one-way, that's for two ways. So we're one-way, so we're really compliant there. And I think our conversation about the 70 degrees is it, it's not provided in the code, but it's not restricted in the code. And so Traffic took a look at that and I think she's comfortable with that configuration. It's certainly a better track of traffic movement than 90-degree is currently on-site now.
Mr. Cooper, maybe, I was just discussing with our attorney. So perhaps, again, if it pleases this board, tonight is the night for a preliminary recommendation with conditions. They're going to have to go to ZHB. So they, they address what they have to address and then they come back here in March with hopefully addressing your comments to whatever extent they can. And I think that way you'll be looking at a, a plan that meets your needs a little more and gives them a chance to finalize some items and prepare for ZHB.
I mean, we'll continue going through this and hopefully we can get there.
Thank you, sir.
Steve, what's the difference between this one and the two ones before it that we didn't do them? What's the difference, huh? It has nothing to do with it. What's the difference?
Why we didn't go through the two ones before?
Why do we turn the two people before these people?
Well, we turned the first person away because they submitted a different set of plans than we reviewed. So we couldn't, we couldn't vote on that, right? So that's, that's, I mean, you're in agreement that the.
They're incomplete plans, they both had incomplete plans. Basically, they, everyone's coming in front, yeah.
Incomplete plans.
They're incomplete plans, this is an incomplete plan. If a normal person would come in with this plan, we would say come back when it's filled out. Yes or no?
Yeah, no, I was going to say, I'm not exactly sure, I mean, they have to go to zoning, right? You have to go to zoning. Do you know when you're going to zoning? Does anybody know when they're going to zoning?
Earliest would be March. Even they filed the application tomorrow, I don't think we could get the advertising in for the February meeting.
Okay.
You know, the thought process from the consultants here is they're asking for preliminary final. We're telling you, we're giving, our recommendation is no, okay? Our recommendation is this plan is not sufficient for preliminary final. But at the same time, we're trying to work with them to say, okay, if you want to give preliminary plan approval tonight, we wouldn't have a problem with that. The applicant can then go out, clean up the plans, put it in a, you know, cover all these issues, show everything on the plans, come back in March seeking either preliminary final in March or final in March. And then they would have hopefully relatively clean plans that they then can take to the zoning hearing board at their hearing in March. Because the zoning hearing board is not going to want to see these plans. And they're going to look at these plans and be like, well, they're not complete. The zoning hearing board needs to see a finished product, not something in, you know, that's in the middle of work. Same time, we are trying to work with them and with the township to try to move this project along. I think the difference between this plan, it's not because this plan is the township. The difference is the first applicant prepared completely different plans that no one had seen or reviewed. The second applicant didn't ask for it. They specifically said, we're not ready for a recommendation, we don't want it. We're, you know, we're still working, you have a neighbor who's fighting him tooth and nail and they're, they're still trying to work things out with the neighbor. Here's an applicant, they've submitted plans, they haven't changed them, they just are not providing enough information on them. And so we're trying to work with them to find out what more information is needed and at the same time work with them through a timeline to keep them moving along.
I have a question. If this were a normal citizen that came in front of us tonight, would you have the same stand that you're saying right now?
Yes, and in fact, I know, we, there has been normal citizens that have come, to come in front of us with timelines that we have tried to work with while at the same time undertaking the appropriate reviews and making sure that they're showing all these things they need.
One thing we have to watch is that because we don't see any elevations except for that planned picture that you put down, what's the clearance underneath this overhang that's coming across the street? Can an emergency vehicle get under there? We've seen no clearances, we've seen no drawings of it, nothing. And so we can't even comment on those things because we don't, we don't know what can fit underneath there. What's the elevations, where are the columns safe? Is there enough buffer on the columns so if they get hit, the building doesn't fall down? There's just too much that we can't see yet, so we don't even know what our questions are.
I think.
I would, you know, I would fully agree with that.
So I think practically speaking, I'm, I'm not sure, in this case, I don't know why it's any better or different to, I think we should just table this. We should give them the feedback that we're giving them. Elizabeth, you just brought up two really good issues. Practically speaking, if you come back to us having been tabled or you come back to us having had preliminary approval but have to come back for final, either way, you have to come back to us and I think that it, I don't think that there's enough of us up here who feel comfortable saying, yes, preliminary, fill out all these, address all these issues. Table it, address all these issues and come back. I think that's what I'm hearing is that, and Peter, I think you articulated the two first applicants, why those are different from this. Had that second applicant asked us to push things forward, we would have had to have a conversation about it. He did come up saying, nope, just want to, just want to table it because I think he wants to go work with his neighbor and not have a big fight on his hands. That's smart. In terms of this, I think it's consistent to table it. Having given you all the comments, you still would need to come back in March. I'm not sure if there's, what the benefit is of preliminary approval tonight.
I don't, I don't think we're saying there is a benefit to it. We're actually saying, the applicant was asking for preliminary final and we're, as the consultants, are saying, at best, they should get preliminary. And that, from a timing standpoint, if you're not comfortable doing that, I don't think that is a problem. They're just going to have to come back and ask for preliminary final in March.
Well, the other point is that without the zoning approval, this plan doesn't move forward.
No, and that's the other thing about March is, you know, they will have, applied by then and as normal, that application would come before you for your review and comment to send to the zoning hearing board regarding the request for the variances.
So does all of the cleanup work occur before they submit to zoning and then we'll see that plan next time around? Is that how?
No, I think they don't have to submit a cleanup plan, cleaned up plan to zoning. They have to have one by time, in time for the hearing. And if they have a cleaned up plan by the beginning of March, they can, you know, provide it as an amendment to their submission. But they need a cleaned up plan to submit to you guys for your March meeting to review. The planning commission should be seeing a cleaned up plan that's essentially in pretty much a final form for you guys to comment on for the zoning hearing board and also comment on for land development.
So we'll see this again before it goes before zoning, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
And perhaps we treat this applicant like for 207 East Lancaster. Give your feedback on the various items, whether you provide preliminary approval with conditions or not, if you just want to table it. But let them know your biggest concerns, which they can address when they come back in one form or another for the March meeting.
Need to also, so sometimes seeing the pictures helps us to know what our concerns are. But I started to state mine, it's basically, I'd love to see an elevation of the overhang and the details associated with how people maneuver underneath there safely in different vehicles, including all the emergency vehicles.
Yeah, and, yeah, I can cover that right now. It will not have full clearance for emergency vehicles. It will be a limited clearance access like you would have at a parking garage. It would not be possible to add to the building to do that. I think one of the things that it would be important to note about. I think one of the things that it would be important to note about this is, this is a fresh land development plan. There's no change of use. The library's been there for 40-odd years. It's still a library. There's not really that much change to the site, except we're trying to improve existing conditions. We're substantially improving handicap accessibility. We're improving access to the West Wayne Avenue side and the South Wayne Avenue side. And we're improving the parking area. And I think it's a little bit different than some of the other things you looked at tonight, just on that grounds alone, which I think everything else was full land development, full change of use. So that was, and I'm really explaining this maybe in the logic of why the township directed us to present it to you in this form with these requests.
Here's the other difference that I want to point out, and it's not a small one. The first two applications are for-profit entities, and they're going to develop their land and make a chunk of money, and that's great. This is, this library is on a budget. We're actually pretty clear on what the budget is because we all got a letter about our bond that is, you know, has been approved, a certain amount of money has been approved for this project. It's all our money. And I'm not saying in any way, shape, or form that we should skirt around our regulations at all. I do think we need to be mindful that this is a nonprofit entity with a limited budget, and, you know, I think we raise good concerns, but it's different from, in terms of the other applicants and their timetables and what this, what this group is trying to accomplish. And that doesn't change our application, I mean, our process. I think we should table this tonight, but I think we should give them the feedback that they need. I wish we had all the money in the world to do a massive change.
We're just saying that they have to do the plans required by our code.
Right.
And those plans have to be seen by people to approve them, and without seeing them, we can't always generate the complete amount of questions either, so...
No, but, I mean, I agree with you.
And again, I'm not trying to be hard. I just, you know, I just want to make it so that it's, again, so we see what we're voting on. I mean, without the numbers, you can't really make an educated decision as to what's going on. And I can tell you, if you cut a corner, somebody's going to come in here and look for that corner someplace else, whether it's a profit or a nonprofit. There shouldn't be a difference. You would get in more trouble doing it the other way. Just, you know, if you had come in with plans with the numbers like everybody else has to do, I agree. I think then you kind of make some, you make some arrangements, but there's just too many holes. There's too many holes.
Can I just take a straw vote on who is in favor of tabling it and giving the recommendations versus who would be in favor of trying to go through the rest of the comments to see if we are comfortable enough to grant preliminary with conditions? So who is in favor of tabling? One, two, three, four. Okay, that's enough. Okay, so we're going to table. Let's give them all, let's, in light of the things that Susan said, let's try and give them enough detailed comments that, you know, if possible, they could come back for preliminary and final, if, if, if they resolve a lot of these other issues. And if they can't, they can't.
And Mr. Chairman, we're not trying to cut any corners, and when I say we, whether it be the library or... That's why we had the consultants review them. That's why they're here before this commission, and we'll go through that process in whatever way pleases this board, so however you wish to proceed.
Yep, now, that's, that's how we're going to do it. So let's continue. We went through all of...
We did, basically, except for...
Yeah, but so, have we given all our comments on the Gannett-Fleming? I know we have to get to traffic next, but we, we stormwater, obviously, you know how we feel about stormwater. Is there any other of the comments?
I think I want to understand eight. I want to, where's the, comment number eight on page three? When you say, Roger, that the 15-foot entrance and exit drive, are you talking up on West Wayne or down where it dumps into the, into the municipal lot?
No, I'm talking about the existing front entrance, and that's what I clarified earlier, that it was not apparent on the plans that that was going to remain one-way. If it's one-way, that can be less than that.
So your comment eight followed, followed on the one, on it being, presuming two-way?
That's correct. And if it's going to be one-way, that comment goes away.
That one goes away as well. Okay, great, thank you.
What about the angle parking, Roger? Do you have a concern about that with the one-way?
I was just looking at the plan a little bit closer. We had met earlier, and I think that you can fit with a 45-degree angle with a 12-foot aisle. I think that the nine-and-a-half by 12, 20-foot should fit in there and provide you with that space on both sides of the aisle, so that you can add additional parking spaces, which I think would be helpful to the library to have that extra space. I know we had discussed it over there, and you had indicated that you didn't think it would fit, but I just kind of looked at it really quick, and I think it will fit.
The, Elizabeth's comment about the overhang, and I appreciate you acknowledging it's going to be limited access, you know, I think as long as we are clear that, you know, fire trucks and ambulance can come through the municipal lot, you know, if it's on that side, if there's an issue on that side, and, and fire and ambulance can come through from West Wayne Avenue, if it's on that side of the, the overhang, that's not a concern to me personally. I want to see the overhang and understand it. I think Elizabeth's comment about the, the actual supports, you know, is, is well-taken.
Yeah, and that's all really building code. I mean, it's not a planning level. Building code will be required to, to protect the building with bollards and whatnot. So we'll definitely comply with that. I do want to remind, it's not an overhang. It's the second floor of the building, so it's not, you can think of an overhang as like a hotel entrance or a canopy, right? But this is the building over top, so it's more like you're, you know, parking under a building, which is allowed under the building code, and it's fire-separated and all those good things. And it's not at either one of our entrances. So in other words, it doesn't screen emergency vehicles' ability to get into the building from the West Wayne Avenue side or the South Wayne Avenue side, so it is different, and I think, and it's definitely allowable under the building code to have that.
Anything else on the Gannett-Fleming letter? Okay, do you want to continue right along?
All right, so the waivers requested that are noted in the Gilmore letter, I think are the same ones, so unless you want to cover those again, I think we get one through five pretty quickly there.
Yep.
If we go into Division B subdivision and land development ordinance comments, we'll either establish that this, this is not really an institutional development, but rather a, I'm on number two, but rather just an expansion to existing building, and thus doesn't require a traffic impact study, or we'll be requesting a waiver for the same, I'm sure. The preliminary final, we've already talked about number one. I apologize for skipping over that. Per what we just discussed, we're going to take a look at the 45 and see if that, in fact, turns out to be a better solution than what's proposed, and we'll get back to you on it. We have no less-than-five-foot radiuses, but that needs to be noted on the drawings. We talked about cleaning up, and this is in prior meeting, the, the crosswalk from the handicap space to the entrance that we talked about earlier, and trying to make that more of a straight line, and if we can do that, we will. We, we will comply with all ramps and so on. The curved ramp that's shown at the front is curved to minimize the total length of that ramp and avoid having a landing, because we were able to make it shorter, and also to assist us in having the least amount of impact with some of the vegetation slash trees that are on that side of the building. Did you have a question?
I just, I have a comment, remind me to talk to you about the bicycle racks at the end.
Okay. So the balance of five are details that, that we will ultimately fill in and comply. Sidewalks, minimum afford, we, for, yeah, we'll comply with that. If there's somewhere that we can't, we'll request a waiver. I don't think there's anywhere that we can't comply. So general comments, number one, reiterates the 45-degree question. Drawing details. Number three is the issue that I just mentioned about the crosswalk, I believe. Number four, we will have all the accessible details on the drawings that need to be there. See, we've talked about where the entrances are located, but obviously, that should be abundantly clear when you first look at the drawing. The vertical clearance wall, we noted. Had, oh, the other issue I wanted to mention to Ms. Springer, had we not been locked out of our offices, I would have had a slideshow for you, and we would have had 3D renderings and a lot of other stuff that would have been helpful. And I do, again, apologize for that. That would be not pro-form. So we were sort of left with what our consultant submitted as the technical drawings, and I acknowledge that that's not the easiest way for you all to understand it, so I apologize for that. Let's see. Truck turning templates, again, we'll be servicing the building from the South Wayne side primarily, and we'll, as we need to, will tell us how far we want to go out looking at the lot, but that's how they're going to access the trash, will be not from West Wayne, but rather the South Wayne lot. Signage, we will comply with. Traffic calming, I think we can talk about that, and we'll ultimately have what we think is best. There's a love-hate, they put a speed bump in there, and I think there's a love-hate with it now. So the library wasn't anxious to have it returned. The thinking was that because it'll be, kind of feel more like entering a parking garage, that a lot of that feel will kind of have a traffic calming effect by definition. But if ultimately you all want it, somebody, you know, said we'd really love to see a speed bump, I'm sure we can manage that. Want to consider traffic, oh, that's, that's nine and 10, I think. So I think that's, that's all on that. If you have questions, obviously.
The, I think that those little squiggly lines down near the handicapped entrance is where the bike racks, is that what those two little things are?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd love to see if you could put those somewhere else away from where older people in wheelchairs might be trying to get into an elevator entrance. And, you know, I, I think they currently are up on the West Wayne Avenue end of the property, and I personally don't see a need to have the kids either driving, riding their bikes down through the parking lot where the cars are pulling out and/or riding on the sidewalk to get down to the bike racks in an area that older people might be trying to maneuver, if there's a different spot that you could put those. Just a side comment, that's all.
Certainly, I think the new location was based that we do have some cover there now, so they wouldn't be sitting out in the weather, but we, otherwise, I don't have a dog in that hunt, so you can put them wherever you like.
Anyone else? I think you kind of know our thoughts.
Thank you.
Removal table?
Removal table, this application? You have to vote on it. Public com, before we table, public comment? Please, come forward.
Hi, my name is Mark Knight. Just a quick question, and I just wanted this addressed with the library. I'm glad they're making it more handicap accessible. I've run into, I see there's going to be an elevator. I've run into issues. I use a power wheelchair, which are heavy. There are some elevators in the city that billions of it made accessible, but the elevator that doesn't have the capacity to handle a power chair, so I hope that's going to be addressed. And if there's going to be some type of overhang or extension of the library over the parking lot, I mean, I have an accessible van that's, has a clearance of eight feet. I don't, a lot of parking garages, an eight-foot van doesn't fit. It's usually like seven feet, four inches. I'm not sure what the height's going to be there.
We'll ask, what is the height of the garage? Do you know? Yeah, yeah, please.
And the elevator, I'm assuming will take the wheelchairs, it's not really handicapped accessible.
Yeah, so the elevator will, in fact, have a significant capacity to meet those knees and others, heavy books and book carts as well. And the garage will have clearance for that level. I think 8'4" is about where we're at.
Thank you.
The spot that we did, that we had shown was, was a van accessible, and now we're going to add a second that will be at the upper part of the lot. Sure.
Thank you.
One minor point to consider. Have you thought about, I know it's our money, but putting in a charging station, because people tend to, for an electric car?
That's a good question. That has not come up. So I'd say, no, we haven't thought about that, but I don't think anybody's ruled that out, per se, either.
Okay, any general public comment? Nope. Any old business?
I don't know if this is old or new, but Doug was liaison to Shade Tree, and we have to have a liaison to Shade Tree.
Any volunteers?
I think I have enough meetings keeping me busy these days. I'll have to give that some thought. No.
Skip Kunda has volunteered.
Great.
So please note that Skip will be our liaison to Shade Tree. Thanks, Skip. Appreciate that.
Let me officially welcome you to the Shade Tree Commission, Mr. Kunda.
And no new additional business, and we will adjourn the meeting.
Great, thanks.